Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call our May 18th special call meeting to order. At this time, if you would, join us in the pleasantries.
Everyone, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just for the record, we have a couple of board members who are not present today. One is under the weather and one is out of town on family business. So there's no changes to the agenda. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion about it? If none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay. Opening remarks. It's a pretty exciting day for Wayne County Public Schools. I think we've been waiting for this for quite a while. And hopefully, we'll get, we have three presentations from three different companies today. Mr. Baker is here with us. Dr. Harold will lead the discussion and the questions. At the end of each question period, I think we got what, 13 questions, Dr. Harold? And after that point, if there are any questions from the board, if you would, please entertain the questions after that. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Dr. Harold. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. It is an exciting day, Dave. We've been waiting for it to get started. Just to make sure everyone understands some reminders, I know we've had some questions. We have guests in the room today, and we thank you for everyone that's here. Remember our guidelines, of course, as we're wearing our face masks while we're seated. And when you guys come up, feel free to take your mask off as you present. The governor did open up some things, but we still have some restrictions with public schools, so just please remember that. And thank you for your cooperation. Also, just want to introduce everyone of the board that we have here. This is Randy Beggs. Randy is our architect from Pinnacle Architecture that the board approved for this opportunity. We have Mr. Henderson to our left, Mr. Latham, Mr. Demaca, who's our vice chair, Mr. West, who's our chair, and then Ms. Strickland to our right. Dr. Lewis is our interim superintendent, and Mr. Schwartz is our board attorney on the far end of the table. Just some reminders about the protocol, the structure. Again, as I sent out to everyone, we've scheduled about 45 minutes for the opportunity for each group to present to the board. There's a 20-minute opportunity at the beginning for the group to present to the Board of Education. And then we do have some questions, some Q and A that I'll lead us through. And then at the end of that, the board does have an opportunity, if you would like, to ask any specific questions that may come up, as well to each presenter. At that, I'll do my best to try and keep us on track and on time, so we don't run over from what we have. So what I'd like to do at this time is ask our first presenting group to come up, which is Sammatt Corporation. We're excited to have, other than I will say that we were very excited to have six companies to put in RFQs. And the facilities committee narrowed that down to a short list of these particular three who have very good qualifications for this opportunity. So this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Tyler Kelly to come up and please introduce himself and his team, and then he can begin the presentation.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me remove this. Appreciate it. More. So first and foremost, thank you all for the opportunity to be here today. We appreciate the time. I'm going to try and cruise through this presentation. Can I see it anywhere? There it is. Appreciate it. Today, again, thanks for selecting us. We feel that we are the best group to present today, based on our resume, based on the people that are here with us today. I'd like to cruise through a quick agenda of how this presentation's going to roll. We're going to chat through managing scope, budget, and time, best practices to navigate, challenges, project management philosophies, challenge and differentiators, and community engagement. So with that, the team today is myself, younger days, a couple of years back. Tyler Kelly, regional vice president. I've built some schools in the past. I built a high school and elementary school in Cary. And in fact, Adam and I worked together as superintendent, project manager, on that school in Cary. Adrian World's here as part of a mentor protege from World Contracting. David Whittsill, pre-con project executive, who in fact has priced two of these projects in the past, two of these very prototypes that we've actually also built in the past. Adam Faust, project executive. Thing about Adam is, I don't know how he gets so technically knowledgeable. He's built, how many schools now? Eleven, twelve, what? Around 11 schools. So his resume, it's pretty much all he's done, done a couple of design-build, and quite a bit of CM at Risk. Blake Malpass, here as project manager, has built a school here in Wayne County, Spring Creek, if I remember correctly. Also retired Air Force. I always mess up his title, so Blake, please don't take offense. Chief Commander?
Command Chief.
Command Chief, close. I was going to mix up. But right here at the base, so proud to have Blake as a part of this team. Also, Hamlin Landis, senior superintendent, who's right now working on a Wayne County Public School project that'll be wrapping up right here in the summer with Adam Faust as well. And I think you'll see from Hamlin's discussion points, the kind of superintendent he is, very deliberate, very knowledgeable, very accurate. And Jonathan Best, project development and diversity manager, and glad to have him part of this team and help bring the mentor protege program together for this project. So with that, again, thank you very much for the opportunity. We appreciate it.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is David Whittsill. I'm the preconstruction project executive for this project. I'll be leading the preconstruction effort on this exciting project for your community. This is a unique opportunity for Sammatt Corporation, because as Tyler mentioned, this will be our third opportunity to build this prototype school. I had the pleasure of working with Randy and his company on the first one that we did, which was on the left, Simkins Elementary School, which was CM at Risk for Guilford County Schools back in 2015. That project was done, came in on budget and on time, which is what they're supposed to do. The second one, we did such a, had such a successful engagement on the first one with Randy's group, that when Elon University came to Sammatt and said, "We'd like you to build an elementary school for us, so that we can work out an exchange program with Al Matt's Burlington Community Schools," we actually invited Randy to join us as a design-build partner, and we built that project through a design-build method. Again, we maintained building it on time, building it within budget. How do we do that? Our preconstruction approach. Now, the nice thing about this prototype scenario is that the construction documents are pretty well set for the vertical construction. So having done this before, we can immediately get into establishing that first control estimate, make sure it's tracking on where it should be with regard to the overall construction budget. Plus, we also have a head start with the key things that are done in the preconstruction phase to prepare for GMP, like putting together the scopes of work, the trade package scopes of work, and really understanding what the trade packages are worth, and how to break them down to maximize the participation that we're looking to have with regard to minority participation forward in the art we just, excuse me. We'll be tracking the budgets with budget comparisons. This really is going to come into play with the site, which the site still has yet to be designed. So we'll be analyzing that through various phases of the development, making sure that we're hitting the key points that need to be addressed with regard to constructability, cost, materials, et cetera. Now, as we all know, right now, materials and the material market are crazy, not only from a price standpoint, but from an availability standpoint. So we'll be monitoring that religiously all the way through the process to make sure that we're on track with getting the best opportunities and the best deals when we go ahead and do this. We'll present to you variations in how the cost is tracking, and at the end of the day, we'll create, with our knowledge of the markets, a control estimate, preliminary GMP, which should be within the budget, so we can release it for bids, and then we'll put it out to bid with the markets and the subcontractors. One of the key pieces of this whole program is team collaboration. That's the CM at Risk, working in hand with the owner's group, with the designer. We have collaboration tools such as the ProCore software that'll be open to everybody. It's a purely open book. Everybody has access to everything that's going on all of the time, 24/7. And a couple of examples of this, Simkins Elementary School, that was put together with a preliminary GMP of $16.8 million. When it was all said and done, the bids came in, we brought it in at 16.3, 3% under the budget, went forward to be a successful project, completed on time. One that I also was the preconstruction lead on, which is one that I'm always proud of, is Guilford Middle School. We came in with a $31 million GMP, and it came in at $30,900,000. That's 1% on $30 million. So as a preconstruction person, that's something that you're really proud of going on. And if you follow this preconstruction approach religiously and do everything right, no surprises on bid day.
Where's the boom? I forgot the boom.
All right, thank you. Adam Faust, project executive. I'll be supporting our team from preconstruction all the way through closeout. As Tyler mentioned, schools are pretty much the extent of my resume. I was just recounting, I'm up to at least 10 that I've done. Probably two-thirds of those being elementary schools, very similar to the Fremont Elementary School. So what you'll see on the screen here is a just conceptual preliminary schedule that we put together, just with some typical rules of thumb for a CM at Risk delivery on an elementary school. So knowing that the building is designed, and most of the preconstruction effort will be on the civil side, site-specific adaptation. We outlined some rough timelines for schematic design, design development, and construction document phase. We envisioned permitting to start somewhere in the DD phase with preliminary zoning reviews and site approvals. With public CM at Risk, obviously, we have the public prequal process, as Jonathan and Adrian will discuss here shortly. But developing that prequal program, project-specific, and providing that for board approval prior to release of the prequal program, with that rolling right into the project bidding. So again, public CM at Risk, lots of experience, that delivery method, we're very familiar with the advertisement, the protocols, handling of bids, as the fiduciary responsibility for Wayne County schools. We would then move into the GMP phase, after leveling the bids, with a projected Board of Education date roughly November. Hopefully get that in before the Thanksgiving timeframe, and when that would release us into the construction phase. Not the greatest time of the year to start construction due to the higher-than-normal rain in the fall, but given the site, it looks like it's a pretty manageable task, pretty flat, limited clearing to do. So the great thing in site development and getting the parking lots and utilities in through the winter to start foundations late winter, early spring, and then start bringing the building out of the ground, with a projected completion of December of 2022. So as we get through the preconstruction phase, we'll refine this, we'll build our detailed schedule with your team and with Randy's team, and map out our work plans and work zones, as Hamlin will mention here shortly. Thank you.
I'm Jonathan Best, project diversity and development manager for Sammatt Corporation. And one thing that we like to do at Sammatt is we like to have great minority participation. We call it our secret sauce. And what we do is we unbundle the work. In CM at Risk, you have a lot of trade packages, and you can have barrier trade package that require bonding that some of our smaller minority firms can't bond, and they don't have the financial capacity to complete. As you see the wheel inside the inner wheel, those are the core packages: concrete, electrical, flooring, structural steel. What we do at Sammatt, and that's the Sammatt advantage, we break these package up. With electrical, you could break it up to structural cabling, low voltage, fire alarm, and electrical package. Just reduce the barrier packages, allowing smaller minority firms to have the chance to bid on the project as first-tier subcontractors. At Sammatt, we don't require bonding for any package over, under, sorry, under $500,000. And this allows for increased minority participation. Another thing we do is our subcontract outreach mixers, and I'll let Adrian speak on that part.
Good afternoon. I am Adrian World, World Contracting, locally here in Goldsboro. And I'll be working with Jonathan to ensure that the minority firms who are interested in the project will have an opportunity to bid those projects. And we'll do it through outreach mixers to increase the minority firm participation. And we're hoping to definitely get a lot of input from the community to do so.
So you guys get me again? And this is how we stand up on projects that we've completed. As you can see on the board, we have Jorsey Simkins Elementary School, which is one of the prototype schools. We were able to achieve 56% minority participation on that project. Also, we have Elon Elementary, which was another one of the prototype schools. We were able to achieve 41% minority participation on those projects. And you can see other K-12 projects that we've completed that exceeded the baseline of 10%.
I'm Blake Malpass. I'll be the project manager, or Malpass is my cousins, I'll say here in Wayne County. It's a, see, y'all knew that too, didn't you? It's great to be back in Wayne County with another opportunity to build another school here. Wayne County means a lot to me, because this was my last career in the Air Force, was out of here, plus my youngest two graduated out of the Wayne County schools. So it means a lot. Sammatt Corporation, we have a process of building anything, and what we call that is the Sammatt Way. And on this, we like to, we plan our job, we know our job, we protect the job, and then we go to execute the job, and above all, we want to do a safe job. And so those are the things that we like to emphasize, and we do it as a team method and a team way. I'll be one of the people that will be there from the very beginning to the very end. The other person that you'll have that will be there from the very beginning will be our superintendent.
Good afternoon. My name's Hamlin Landis, superintendent. Again, to elaborate on what Blake said, all of us together work on planning our job, knowing our job, protecting the job, and where I particularly concentrate on is the execution of the job and making your job safe. And it's important to make sure each and every individual goes home safely to their families every day. Example of making sure our family, we go home to our families every day, in the top left, you'll see a commitment board on a current project that I'm running in Cary, North Carolina, right now. After each trade has gone through orientation, I take them out to the field where this board is posted, and ask them to sign this board as a commitment to safety to themselves, their coworkers, and more importantly, our families. Prior to any boots on the ground, we meet internally with our safety and quality teams to make sure we are executing certain quality details, such as a skin, and getting that tightened, closed up, and waterproof, and also highlighting any potential safety hazards on the project. Before any of our trades come on site, at least two weeks before they mobilize on site, we have pre-installation meetings with them to talk about the different phases of their work, to make sure the submittals are in and approved, and see if they have any RFI's or any questions on those, and to talk about the quality aspects of their phase of work. Daily, as part of a lean principle, we meet, I meet with the foreman and superintendent on site for 15, 20 minutes daily, normally around 8:00 AM. And we do our weekly work plan, which, there's not a picture of that, there's a picture of the constraint log up there. We go through a weekly work plan to make sure everybody's in the correct work zone. We have a constraint log that we review to see if there's anything holding anybody up from performing their work on site, whether it be an RFI, another trade, or their own selves sometimes. We want to keep everybody honest on site and have that open dialogue. We have an inspection log that we keep, and also a delivery log. We are working in a small town with some farms neighboring us. We want to make sure these deliveries are not pulling off on the side of the road and damaging anybody else's property. There's an example of a work zone plan at your top right. Like Adam was saying, we spend time in getting to know our job and how we want to sequence it, and put it into the schedule, and have a highlighted plan in the bid documents, so everyone bidding the job knows how the job will flow. And we also ask for their input, because sometimes we don't see everything the way they do. Some additional tools that we use, one of Sammatt's core values is innovation. ProCore, like David said earlier, ProCore you have 24/7 access to, from financials to the drawings and the documents. And that bottom one, the field and quality, is where I really have a lot to do with. We monitor our pre-installation meetings, our pre-install checklist, our first delivery checklist. All those are accessible to everyone that has involvement onto the project. The next one is the BIM modeling. The two photos in the middle of the screen are my current project in Wayne County right now. There is a existing, existing building for a public school. And there is a little bit different. We had to go in there, and we utilized a 360 laser scan to capture all where the steel was. And we found out the steel wasn't matching with what was in the architectural model. And we also found out there was a lot more existing bracing on the exterior wall that conflicted with a lot of ductwork and a lot of pipe installation. And from there, we were able to highlight that issue, get it resolved prior to workers coming on site and material coming on site that both would have sat there and waited for an answer, so save money in the long run for the owner. We use drones, not only for progress photos, but for our documentation, our pre-slab pores. That drone's able to get a bird's-eye view where we couldn't get with a normal camera. That way, it documents it, and we always know what went into the ground. P6, our schedules will be done in primavera six. And a new app that we're currently using, Open Space, for the walls, prior to any walls getting closed up, we go through and do our own internal QAQC process. Once we've checked all those boxes, we'll go through with the 360 camera and shoot each and every room at different stages, and that's another form of documentation so we always know what went into that wall.
One thing that we like to do at Sammatt, we don't like to just come in and build a structure. We like to help build a community. So what we've done at Sammatt is we've teamed up with Goldsboro High School and put in our pioneer program that we started, which is Students in Construction. What our Students in Construction program does is it gets high school students, real-world, hands-on experience with paid internships. They work with our electrical, HVAC, landscape, plumbing contractors. They work hand-to-hand on the job. We get early parent engagement. They go through an interview process. We give them skills of hard work, discipline, attitude, working with a team. These students are able to go on our job sites and function in the actual world. As you can see, we started this program at Dudley High School in Greensboro on Fire Station 7 and 56. Gavin is one of our participants. He said this program was life-changing. He said he was able to get skills that he didn't have that can take him on for the rest of his life. You can send a picture to your top left, our Students in Construction participants, with their CTE director, and as you see, the second picture is them at the groundbreaking. They're in the project. A second program that we've pioneered that helps build community is our Mentor Protege Program, where we take a smaller firm, they work with Sammatt during construction, during preconstruction, throughout the beginning and the end of the project. They help us work with our MWB firms and our outreach. They also are able to build capacity and able to get skills that can help them in the future. And I'll let Adrian with World Contracting, who we teamed up with, tell you what this program will mean to him.
What this means for World Contracting would definitely would be to gain the knowledge and the experience from Sammatt for our administrative staff locally, because we are federal contractors, and we perform work throughout the United States, but we don't have any work locally. So teaming up with Sammatt would definitely bring that to us as far as our home-based staff receiving that knowledge and understanding of the construction projects. Also, we're looking at job creation for Wayne County as a whole. Teaming with Sammatt would definitely increase that, possibilities of adding additional jobs for the workforce for Wayne County.
No, no, two. I'm going to try and keep it short and sweet. So thanks again for the opportunity. As you can see, there's a team of true builders that can build this school, from quality to safety to community involvement, MWB participation. Looking at some of those metrics that we've met in past projects is nearly unheard of, and we intend for the same thing here. I would just like to read a couple quotes on the back of the sheet that everybody has in front of them. Forgive me, I'm fighting glasses, so. "All in all," and this is from Guilford County's school's principal for Western Guilford Middle, "all in all, Sammatt provided on-time construction great communication through a nearly seamless process. And I'm personally and professionally grateful to them for their commitment to our school during this and during and beyond this project." Another one from the assistant superintendent of operations. "The professionalism, competency, and dedication observed throughout this building process went beyond what is typically observed on a construction site. In conclusion, we are beyond satisfied with the quality of the construction of Elon Elementary School, the professional service that Sammatt Corporation provided, as well as personnel that were either employed by Sammatt or associated directly to Sammatt Corporation." And the final one, "Their company was accurate in their initial assessment of the scale and cost of our project. The project was completed under budget and ahead of schedule. I don't know what else anybody could ever ask for." So with that, thank you very much, and we would humbly ask to be your partners in this project. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for your presentation. Could you please stay?
Okay.
So thank you again, Sammatt team, for your presentation. Please excuse me for talking to the guy sitting on the right.
Some of those folks may come up for the questions.
Absolutely, absolutely. So this time, we'll move into just some questions and answers. And please address your answers to the board.
Got it. Thank you.
So the first question, and this may be one for Hamlin and Blake, is to discuss the experience of the superintendent and the project manager.
Come on up, guys.
Well, as I said, managing projects of all kinds, I've been doing it for probably almost 40 years, if you count my Air Force time. I was lucky when I did finish my Air Force time to get hired locally for one of our competitors here later today, and was able to really learn things and did a lot of different jobs with them, ECU Student Union, Spring Creek Middle School, and some other things. So I've been doing this as my second career since 2012.
My experience, I've had 23 years this year in the construction industry. When I got out of high school, I tried to join the military, and there was a medical reason why I couldn't not stay in. So a friend of mine's father owned a construction company. I started working for them and worked from the bottom to the top, and had managed projects for Saturday, Sunday projects for a couple thousand dollars, and worked on projects as big as $120 million. So I've enjoyed each one. Each one has its challenges, from the $5,000 one to the $5 million one. The small ones can have just as many challenges on the project. Thank you.
If I could elaborate for just a minute on both of these two gentlemen. You know, I think at the core of these, both these guys is they manage with a firm and respectful platform. I've seen Blake negotiate through challenges with subcontractors. That's what this business is. We're going to solve challenges, we're going to shrink problems, we're going to work a plan, and we're going to create a workflow. I've been with Hamlin, and honestly, I thought I was the best superintendent when I was a superintendent, but I've had the pleasure of working with Hamlin, and being on his sites and walking the site, and now I kind of show up and just walk the site a little bit and spend some time with them, and try to find issues out in front. And every single thing I bring up to Hamlin, he's got an answer for like that. He knows the projects better than anybody else. He's in an owners' meeting, going through an RFI and walking through a conflict, and he can grab the model and pull the model up in the setting and show it. That's the kind of superintendent he is. Well-rounded, knowledgeable, and owns the project.
Thank you. So, Mr. Kelly, can you elaborate or tell us more about the experience that Sammatt has in public education construction?
So I would say, you know, I misspoke earlier when I said Adam had 11 schools. Yes, 10 schools. Sorry, I forgive that. But we've been in public education really since the '90s here in North Carolina. You know, specifically to this project, we've done two of these prototype schools already. And that's from, you know, K through 12 to even higher education. We're currently doing a project right now at Wayne County Public School System that's under construction as we speak. So our resume dates back to the '90s for an exact count on the amount of schools, I think, would be, I'd be remiss, I don't want to misspeak.
Thank you. Can you describe your process for conceptual estimating during the beginning stages in providing a guaranteed maximum price?
Well, I should bring the expert out. Since you've specifically done this one twice as well.
I thought it was off the hook, but I guess not. In this case, the conceptual estimate is really going to come into the site work. And what we're going to look for, and we can start it right with an architectural site plan. We'll take that site plan, and we have our own in-house database, we have our own in-house experience. I personally come from a very strong civil background. So what we will do is we will interpret from that site plan, and any kind of information available from the civil engineer, narrative-wise, et cetera, what the anticipated flows of the water are for stormwater, where the utilities are located, as far as what we've got to do for tie-ins, how the grades work, whether we need to remove potentially soil that's bad, or whether we just need to build up a site based on its elevation to sea level. We'll take all that, and we'll use our in-house knowledge to begin with. We'll take all that and we'll use our in-house knowledge to begin with, and develop a control estimate based on our internal takeoffs, we would show the design team and yourselves what we are anticipating and what that number's based on to start that initial control estimate. Once that's in place, that's our starting point, then we will look to Randy and his group to supply us with drawings as they progress, schematic design, that first layer of stick drawings that just shows you the intended path based on the research of the knowledgeable professionals, right up through the locations for the exits of the water and everything else, and where they're coming into the building and how it relates to the building. And we'll take that, we'll put another estimate together, and we'll compare that to the previous estimates, we can track where we are, where we're going, and if we see anything that becomes problematic or needs to be addressed or focused on, then that's the point where we'll start it, because the earlier we do that, the more successful we are in dialing it in for that final piece. That process will continue through with as many iterations as it takes to get the project on track, right up into that final point where it is the ASR permit set that's gonna go into the authorities for the final recognition that this is where we want things to be. We'll use that to establish that construction document or preliminary GMP budget that would be used to establish the value of the trade packages, and put it out to bid for the final bid for the GMP.
So, kind of a follow-up on that? So, the next question is kinda describe how or when you would show the owner, Wayne County Public Schools, kind of when that cost of construction could be finalized. I know you had a timeline, right, that was shown, but kind of, when could you potentially show that to the owner and the architect?
We would share each estimate rendition with the design team and the owners' group immediately upon completion after we get the set of documents that we're basing it on. In this case, we would probably do an early one on the building since the building is already designed, and as quickly as we can get through that in-house and establish that number, we would share that with the owner so you can see where it tracks. We would also compare that back to the budget for the project. Same thing with the sites, as that stuff comes through, with each rendition, we will go ahead and we'll share what we come up with and interpret at the time we do it. Now, we'll set up with Adam and myself, we'll start this thing, as he showed you, a bar chart schedule, we'll schedule out the pre-construction, and we'll work with Randy, and we'll work with timelines of the owners, and we'll work with timelines for the jurisdictional authorities as to when we need to meet dates, and we'll plan our deliverables from the design team and how long we're gonna take to produce that estimate, and let you know when you're gonna get that deliverable, each way, all the way up to the preliminary or final GMP to say yes from the board, you can put this out to bid because we feel we're on target. That's how we'll work that process.
Our next question is, how do you choose subcontractors to bid on?
So, all of our subcontractors will go through a pre-qualification process, and we'll be reviewing their financials, their safety performance, we'll be engaging Adrian and Jonathan to make sure that we're gathering the entire community, and so, yeah, we'll go through a rigid qualification process.
So, one of the things that I know, our next question that is important to us and the board, is how, if you can describe how you achieve quality in construction, because of course we would like to have obviously a quality product for our children.
Okay, so, I can answer that, and I really, I wish I had my phone handy, and we could actually show you what we do. So, we track everything on Procore, and within Procore, we have sections that are benchmark inspections, mock-up inspections, closure, wall closure inspections, footing, we have a depth of knowledge that's been shared over the years to create these checklists, and we put it all on Procore. So, right now, like on Hamlin's project, we have what would be called like a rolling completion list, and it tracks items along the way in an effort to get closer to that zero punch list item, instead of letting them carry and then it affects another trade down the line. We're addressing those as we go through the project, and it is all right there on Procore. And we further do it by understanding the project and knowing the project and getting into the details. Beyond that, we touched a little bit on the drone platform. Come on up, man. The drone platform, what we've done is we have a quality QAQC manager locally, they have a QAQC director that's over our entire company, and our local resource, Billy Williams is his name, he'll come out with a drone, he'll fly that site back to mapping, same thing with the envelope of the building, because we wanna create those maps so when it's closed up, we know where it all is, right? It's easy, and that's a, that service to me is an end user, to be able to have that available to you for the lifecycle of that project is nearly unheard of. It's, red lines are great, as-bills are great, when you go out and you mark it, pull a dimension off a wall, and here's where your underground is, there's nothing better than seeing it right there live and knowing exactly where it is too. But you wanna talk about a little bit how you manage QAQC?
Yes. So again, we do have a kickoff meeting with our internal QAQC team, with our regional guy and our company-wide guy, and we'll, we almost have to present to them on each project what we think are the key aspects of the project, those defining features of work. What also helps us monitor quality is doing those pre-installation meetings, it allows the CM team, it forces us to get into the submittals, the approved submittals, understand all that product data, and help develop those meeting minutes, so we can sit there and question the trades to make sure they have everything covered. We do, we cover up, again with Tyler on the Procore, we have a certain standard of different checklist, but we are able to cater Procore to create custom checklist for each project if that's what's necessary. Each project is different, and I've gone in each one of my projects before and catered certain things to make it a lot easier, where I can cover a lot more area when it comes to reports from Randy or the owner, or as you're walking the site. If we can convince you to use Procore on your phone or on one of our iPads, you'll send us a report, we read through the report, and those items, any deviations or discrepancies that you come up with on monthly, weekly field walks, we enter into Procore's observations immediately, so the sub is notified, and we get correction to that. And every morning at four AM, the sub gets an email saying, "You haven't completed your observation," or "You haven't completed your punch list," it's a rather annoying tool sometimes. You understand that, thank you.
And just to further that, we've been, you know, we just celebrated our sixtieth anniversary, and we're growing North Carolina businesses, we've been here since, you know, nineteen sixty-one, and we've continued to grow because we understand quality, and we understand the lasting impression that's left when we leave that area, that's what people remember.
Thank you. And Hamlin, this one may be in your area too. So, in the slide presentation, just, you kinda touched on one of the questions, which is about safety, you know, discussing how you ensure safety on the project. Could you just elaborate on that one more time for the board?
Yes, as the lead superintendent, I generally do all the orientations myself, so they're seeing the main superintendent and hearing the main superintendent's voice talk to them through each, through the orientation. I don't pass that task off to anybody else on the team, so they, all the trades that come on the site, or any visitors that come on the site, understand that that is my high importance of the project, is making sure everyone goes home safely. We do orientations, every, we'll usually do them every Mondays or Wednesdays following stretch and flex, I did forget to mention that, we, I am a big proponent of stretch and flex every morning at seven AM. If you drive by one of our sites, you'll see a stretch and flex, and that gives me the opportunity to speak to the entire site if something has changed for the day, or we need to, we have moving equipment in one area, we need everybody to stay out of that area, it gives me the opportunity to speak to everyone, and then reiterate it at the eight o'clock stand-up meeting as well. We do safety meetings every Tuesday, and at least once a week or twice a month every other week, our regional safety manager is on-site inspecting the entire site and giving a different look at the site. As far as the rest of the team, we do have the daily top-ten checklist that we have to perform, I try not to be the only one doing those checklists, because everything could, I could have blinders on, and we'd like to rotate that to one person doing that each week, so we have different aspects looking at the job.
Thank you.
So, if I could expand on that one second. So, we also, Procore, you know, we track, we have our safety charrette where we start the project and understand the risk that's involved in it, but also we have some analytics that come out of that, so if we have a subcontractor that has challenges, struggles with safety, we can clearly define it, so it's not a moment in time we can share that, we'll call the principals in, we'll address those issues face-to-face. And for Stretch and Flex, for those of you who have not seen it, it's really great when you're doing it, because, you know, it's not often that we, people beat horns at us, but when they're cruising down the road at seven o'clock in the morning, they see about sixty people out there touching their toes and doing stretches and calisthenics, it's pretty amusing. But it's, it really is, sing it right, seeing me out there stretching, it's silly, but, you know, these, I think the great part of that is it really sets the project up for success right out of the gate, first thing every morning, opens up that dialogue for the project.
You guys choose straps with those hard hat?
In certain conditions, yes.
Thank you. Our next question is, how do you facilitate changes requested by the owner of the school board, and can you discuss that change order process?
So, the scope of changes can vary greatly from a minor construction directive, field directive, all the way to, you know, major revision. We will receive the change, review it internally, we'll route it to any applicable affected subcontractors, depending on the urgency of the nature of the change, if it's something that is, you know, imminently gonna affect work that's gonna go in place, we'll have a conversation with your team to determine if we should potentially even halt some of the work, to avoid putting work in place that could cost money to take back out, further increasing the cost of the change, or if it's something further down the line that we have time to review and implement. And we also will look at the change, and if there's cases that warrant this, could provide input or feedback on maybe less cost impactful ways of implementing that type of change. Really, we like to flush out any change-type opportunities or RFIs in the pre-construction phase, so we do constructibility reviews at each design iteration, with this being a prototype, obviously it's been through that quite a few times now, but we still like to look at the previous RFI logs from previous builds, just as a second set of eyes to take a look and just make sure that we avoid as many changes as possible. Changes are one of the biggest trouble areas in a project, you know, from potential schedule impact, cost impact, it really impacts the entire job, so we like to flush out those changes and implement them upfront in the bid documents to the best of our abilities.
So, our next two questions for the sake of time, and we'll try to combine. So, it's discuss your punch list process, but as well as that, also including your closeout and warranty process, so could you just kinda elaborate on those three processes? Punch list, closeout, and warranty.
So, I hate to keep referencing Procore, but we track all of our punch lists in Procore. We do it really from the beginning of the project, and that's where the rolling completion list comes into play. Our ideal setup is when we're working through an area and we have a workflow in place, we're closing doors behind us, we're doing our punch, we're issuing it to our subcontractors before we entertain the archdeck or owner's punch, that area's gonna be ready for review. Again, it's on Procore, it's pinned to the drawings, so it's never gone, it's always there, it's readily available. So when we ask Randy to come, we're gonna give Randy our completed punch list, we're gonna show him, we can print it out with pictures, locations, and everything, he's gonna come take a look at it and say, "Okay, I'm ready for inspection." But again, I think that the biggest thing with managing punch lists is managing it from the start of construction, and don't allow it to get to the end, because if you're managing punch in the last thirty days of a project, it's a miss, we wanna catch it along the way. And as far as closeout, I would say closeout is, I don't wanna go all the way back to the beginning of the project, but really at fifty percent of the project, we're gathering all O&amp;M's, all warranty items, working on as-bills, making sure that we have all records as part of the specifications that are captured at the front of the project, and those are delivered, if, you know, another challenging position to be in is allowing closeout to linger after a project. It doesn't do the school district any good to allow those things to move past substantial completion, we wanna be turning that over as part of substantial completion.
Sounds good.
Hope that answers the question.
Yes, sir. So, the last question might be the hardest.
Okay.
Why do you want this project?
Oh, we want this project because we, a couple things. We enjoy being part of the community, Wayne County, Blake, speaking back through that, we wanna be a part of the community, we wanna build something that's lasting in a community. You know, part of building in general, you know, is getting a chance to see the work, carrying the pride, involved in what it takes to do it. But building for children to create the future of our country, I mean, I don't think there's anything better. I've built a couple of schools ground up, and I've done a lot of renovations, and being a part of that, feeling the energy when the school's open and the children walk in there, and they walk into this fresh school, and it's wide-eyed and open and ready for engagement, and ready for education, and ready to learn, how could you not wanna build that, is what I would say. It's prideful, so.
Thank you, thank you. So, this concludes the prepared question and answer of board members, so this time, if there's any questions that you would like to ask, it's your opportunity to do so.
This is a tough one to ask, and I don't want you to take it the wrong way, but in the event, everything's done, you turn it over to us, and then something goes wrong afterwards, what are your company's policies in dealing with fixing a situation that wasn't on purpose, obviously, but it just happened? How would you guys handle it?
So, you know, I think one thing that's great about our organization is, and this comes right from Martha Sammet himself, is that we're gonna be back, and it doesn't matter if it's six years down the road or nine years down the road, we're here, we're a family-owned and operated business in North Carolina, we've been here for years, and we're gonna, we're gonna honor the warranty and beyond, we're gonna protect the client, and we're gonna come fix it. It's not gonna be, and usually what happens is we fix it, and then we deal with what was the root cause of it later, but there shouldn't be a delay in anything like that.
Any other questions?
You guys built, renovated this school two other times.
Yes, sir.
When was the last one completed?
Twenty nineteen. Yeah, twenty nineteen, two thousand and nineteen. Yeah, that's Elan Elementary.
Mr. Schwartz, did you have any questions?
Yes, sir. How are you, as a company right now, managing the rising costs of essential building materials like steel and asphalt, lumber?
So, the majority of those things we're ahead of, we understand that they're coming, we've seen some of the escalation, we're creative, back to what I said, we're shrinking the problem. We're gonna procure materials well in advance, we're gonna find a place to safely stage them, if they can't fit on the site, we're gonna find a bonded facility to carry them, that's the fastest way we can reduce risk. Some of the commodities that, like if you look at lumber and what the futures are doing in the past five days have plummeted from where they were, so it's, there's a lot of speculation in the market now, but I think if I could boil it down and answer your question is, we're gonna get them as quickly as possible if we can't find an alternate material type. If there's an option for an alternate material that'll meet the design criteria, we're gonna try for that first, you know? If we can't get there, we're gonna find a different place to hold materials. Some of them, steel, has gone up, and we don't have, we can't necessarily control the pricing of it, but we can evaluate how the building's built and look for different options too. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, follow-up on that, you sort of answered it, but if you can answer this a little bit more directly, follow-up, how are you managing, or do you anticipate managing unexpected cost increases or supply disruptions for materials and supplies?
I think being ahead of the project, knowing the project, knowing the schedule, is the fastest way we can do that, and the best way we can do that. If we're caught by surprise, that's how we, that's how an opportunity is missed, so.
Any other questions? About Eric. Well, Sam, we'd like to thank you for coming, thank you for your presentation today, we really appreciate you taking your time to come, presenting, having this potential opportunity with the board. So, board, at this time, we have scheduled a break, so they have the next presenting opportunity to get set up and go from there.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Going over the kind of ground rules again, remember that when you're speaking at the podium, you can definitely take, uh, your mask off, we feel kind of under some of those guidelines of being a public school assistant in North Carolina, so when you're up here, feel free to take your mask off to communicate and speak with the board. We're excited to have you here. The, um, protocol, as we discussed before, we have forty-five minutes, you have twenty minutes of your presentation, and we'll have some Q and A after that, and then the board has the opportunity to ask some specific questions if they would like to. Um, so just to make sure we know where everyone is, we have Mr. Baker, our architect for Pinnacle Construction, we have Mr. Lynn Henderson, uh, working from our, from our left to our right, one of our board members, Mr. Wade Latham, Dr. Demaca, who is our vice chair, Mr. West, who's our chair, we have Ms. Strickland, our other board members, we have, uh, Mr. Dr. Lewis, excuse me, to the left of, um, Mr. West, our interim superintendent, and Mr. Schwartz, our board attorney. So, at this time, board members, I'd like to, um, ask Mr. Jeremiah Daniels if he'd come up to the podium to introduce his crew and begin to give his presentation. Thank you.
Dr. Harold, I'm not real sure they were present, but we do have two other board members who are not present today, but one of them's out of town, one of them is, uh, so.
Can everybody hear us okay? We're a team, we want to kind of present as a team, that's all right.
You guys, you can say you guys.
Okay, well, good afternoon, uh, thank you so much for having us here, it is an honor to have an opportunity to be a part of this interview process. Uh, as, as Dr. Harold said, my name is Jeremiah Daniels, I see a few familiar faces, um, but for those of you that don't know me, maybe you know me by my other name, which is Kate Daniels' husband. Uh, so, just saying, um, we, we have been waiting for this moment for eight months, eight months, hold that thought, we're going to get to it in a minute. Uh, let me introduce you to my team, we'll let them introduce themselves, Roger, take the light.
My name's Roger Morel, I'm project manager for Daniels and Daniels, currently, we're doing two, two pinnacle architecture projects in Onslow County similar to these.
My name's JJ Wilson, I'm, uh, site superintendent for Daniels and Daniels, and I'm currently superintendent at the Catherine Lake Elementary Project in Onslow County.
My name is Brandon Ziegler, I'm project engineer on both the Stump Sound and Catherine Lake Projects in Onslow County, and I assist Mark and JJ.
And I'm Katie Williams, Vice President of Corporate Development, I'm here in Goldsboro, I'm in our office here, and I support these guys by overseeing our IT, safety, uh, human resources, and our training and development.
Thank you, Katie, and also in the room, we have, uh, our president, Jeff Daniels, our, uh, business, uh, development associate, Alan Lambert, and our CFO, Will Barnes, so we've got a whole team here. So, with that, Katie, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, in nineteen sixty-two, our grandfather, along with his brother, started Daniels and Daniels Construction Company, uh, and it was based on a pretty simple business model, uh, dead, uh, built on relationships and dedicated to craftsmanship. We have been very fortunate, um, over the years to have, uh, a second and a third generation, um, who not only uphold this model, but they have also built upon it over the past several decades. Um, so, for this project with Daniels and Daniels, you're going to get the home team advantage. Uh, our employees live, serve, and work in Wayne County, um, so we are committed to its continued growth and development, um, of the community, its members, and of course, its institutions, education obviously being a huge part of that. Um, we love advocating for the construction industry here in Wayne County, uh, when we go to career fairs, middle school, high school career fairs, um, we not only see your kids, but we see our kids there as well, uh, we see that next generation of construction managers, um, and we are always excited to show these kids, um, that there's thriving construction careers right here in Wayne County when they graduate. When we work in Wayne County, we're able to use our projects as a catalyst for that growth, um, so as you can see in the upper right-hand corner, that's our Southern Wayne Gym Project, uh, that we completed last year. The Masonry Club is that little cluster, uh, of group, um, in the middle of the building, they were able to do regular site visits, um, throughout the brick and block installation, um, they got exposure to potential employers right here in Wayne County, uh, got to ask questions, and really apply kind of what they were learning in the classroom, um, directly on site. Jeremiah?
Thank you, Katie. Right. So, that's, that's enough about us, we are not here to talk about us, we are here to talk about your project. So, I said a while ago, eight months, for the past eight months, ever since we heard about this project potentially coming here to Fremont, we've been planning for this project. We have the experience of completing now two schools, two schools for pinnacle architecture, think of the value that we have and the experience and the knowledge and everything that we've learned from those two projects, we want to bring those to you, to your project, to make it even better. So, it's not just the past eight months, we didn't even know before that, it's really been the past eighteen months, we've been working on these other schools, and we have that to bring to you. So, with that, um, we, we've broken this up into two, uh, separate sections, first, pre-construction services. Now, with that, this project is, uh, not your typical city at risk, typically, you'll bring in a contractor early on in the design process, with this one, you guys have a unique opportunity where you really have the building design already complete, you just need to finish the, the civil design and start working through budgeting. We are the best team to do that, because we have just immediately finishing these two other schools. So, we know this project inside and out, and we've got tremendous, the, the civil projects on these other two are, uh, really, really intense, so we've got the experience to bring to you. So, we'll run right into the budgeting, uh, we're going to give you constant budget updating, when we know something, you all are going to know something. Nobody likes surprises, especially when it comes to construction budgets, so as we learn things, you're going to know them, it's going to be a constant, open dialogue about the construction budget as we go through the pre-construction process. We get real-time feedback from our subs and suppliers. We have several subs doing multiple scopes on these other projects, these guys are constantly asking, hey, guys, if you had to do this thing again, how would your numbers look? What you do, what's, what's going on with that? Can you hold, how, how do, how do those things look? So, we're giving that information all the time, and it's not just from those subs, we've got a good finger on the pulse, uh, here in eastern North Carolina. And we've got very recent historical data, and I mean very recent for material quantities. When we have subs starting quotes, uh, not only, it, it's not just from what's on the plans and specs, but actually having done this twice before, we know what goes into these buildings, and we know how to qualify and quantify subcontractor quotes. And then, maybe even more important than that, time to complete, these gentlemen here know what it takes to get this project done, they've done it before, they know what goes into the job and how long it should take to do it. Pre-qualification of subs, subcontractors can either make this project go really smooth, or they can give us fits all along the way, so our pre-qualification process is key. So, we got the obvious, we need to have good past performance on similar projects, the subs are licensed, financially sound, good safety record, all those things will be in our pre-qualification process, but let's go beyond the obvious. Manpower and resources to perform, as I said in the previous slide, these guys know what it takes to get these projects done, they know how many masons need to be on site to keep up with the schedule, how many roofers, how many drywall installers, they know what it takes, so when we go to pre-qualify our subs, it's not just have you done all kinds of great things in the past, do you have the manpower to make this happen on this job? We think that's incredibly important. And then, we have our minority participation, minority women participation, extremely important to us. We've been doing a lot of state and federal and municipal work for a long time, so we are no stranger to the participation goals, but it's not just outside of the goals, it's things that we wanted to, to elevate everyone in our community. We have a great network of subs, we participate in a lot of outreach events, um, we, we'll do things that, that we need to for smaller companies, for startup companies, for minority women-owned businesses, we'll do payments to fit, uh, their needs, if we need to do joint checks with people just starting out and they don't have, uh, access to certain suppliers, we can help out with that. We'll break out scopes as needed, if we have somebody who's a, a minority business who does acoustical ceilings, but it was included in the big guy's drywall package, we can break that out, and that's just one example of, of great many things we do to encourage and get that minority of women participation that we all need. And last, but certainly not least, the subcontractor training. We feel it's up to us to make sure that we're elevating everyone that we work with to a higher standard. We've got a picture right here of us doing fall protection training for a roofing contractor, we'll do safety training, we'll do accounting training, we'll do project management, we'll do whatever we, whatever we need to help bring subcontractors up, uh, a level, if, if, if people are growing, then we're growing too, and that's, that's what we believe in. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Roger for just a minute, uh, to talk about our experience from the past schools during the, on the pre-construction side.
Thank you, Jeremiah. So, we want to bring you our past experience, not only for just building these two schools in Onslow County, but all the experience that we've done with other school and educational projects throughout my career and these other guys' career in Daniels and Daniels as well. So, what we'll be faced with is, we got to figure out how to get you from here to here. Everybody knows in construction, we, there are so many unknowns, and so, our job is to make sure that we get you from what we had there at Stump Sound on the top to that finished one on the bottom that is now finishing up on time and within budget. And there was a quick period during, uh, the project there at Stump that the owner was begging us to send him pictures that didn't have mud and water in it, but we were able to re, we were able to re-strategize and work this project around to where we were able to complete this on time and in budget, and that's what we would expect to do again for you at Fremont. With the civil designs, uh, not being completed yet, that would be a huge advantage for us to get in on the front end of the project, because we would be involved at, with, as a CM at-risk contractor to help be a part of that design, we would be looking for key elements from our standpoint, because we'd be focusing on schedule, as to how we could get the ground running faster, get approvals, maybe pass faster on certain areas, identify to the civil engineer what the critical areas are, what the critical submittals are, and the things that we need the quickest to be able to get this job going quickly. Uh, the other thing we do is, we have a constant awareness of costs, whether it's allowance-based or whether it is just any item in general that may have a potential for saving the owner money, because we're in this together, for instance, on the Catherine Lake Project, we ended up with, uh, twenty-one thousand cubic yards of undercut and off-site field, and we began to realize that this was an issue, we worked together, our site team did with the geotech people, with the architects, and with the, uh, engineers to, and the grading contractor to come up with a cost-saving measure of using GeoGrid to cut down on, uh, the undercut, which ended up being twenty-one thousand cubic yards, but would have been forty-two thousand cubic yards, and ended up saving the owner apparently, uh, an extra six hundred thousand dollars that they otherwise would have spent. So, we're on top of all that during the, uh, not only the civil design, but in the design phase.
Thanks, Roger. Let me come back to that, uh, value that I was talking about earlier, this is the reason why this team is here, I brought the actual field management team with me today, is, this is where they'll shine, this is where this value that they have gained, all of this experience from these two schools, and they are ready to apply it directly to your Fremont project. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Roger to talk a lot more about our construction services.
So, project staffing, we planned this from the beginning, we know exactly what size staff that we need to complete the project, uh, we will have, uh, four primary people, we'll have project manager, project engineer, superintendent, and assistant superintendent, we're the ones that will be bumping elbows for the entire duration of this project. I am a hands-on manager, so I'm a project manager that's on-site, always looking for , uh, ways to streamline things and, and stay totally on top of communication, and so, we'll have just the right staff. Uh, quality control and safety, we at Daniels, we have full-time safety director and quality control, we take these items very seriously, not only with full-time people, we, we keep an eye on those things ourself, day in and day out, these guys look at it constantly.
Yeah, I spend at least eighty percent of my day in the field, going over the details with the subcontractors, scrutinizing their work. Um, the safety aspect of it, too, there, I mean, we're there to enforce it, but we also like to educate people about it, so that we create a culture of, uh, safety, so that everybody goes home at the end of the day.
And just to kind of chime in on what JJ was saying about quality control, uh, we use a web-based, uh, project management software, which allows us to create tasks, um, which would, which, uh, in our, empowers us to be able to see those tasks through to fruition and to see that they're, the deficient work or incomplete work is completed, um, that same information is available to the owner the entire duration of the project. Um, and again, on safety, um, safety is paramount, uh, we want everyone to come to the job site, perform the work effectively, efficiently, and be able to return home in the same or better condition than how they came to the job site.
Brandon also conducts bilingual safety meetings, and, uh, we all, if we see something on sites that's out of whack, it's not beyond us to stop the whole operation or stop the job, we have to, until we get things corrected. One thing big about Daniels and Daniels is they, uh, have a motto of building leaders, we've all had mentors to hopefully get us through all the positions we've been in, I've had plenty of mentors, and Daniels is big on this, I've had the opportunity to work with these guys and help mentor them along the way, and, uh, they've been able to be a part of the mentorship problem, program, too.
Yeah, I'd like to pass on our experience that we've, uh, gotten over the years to the interns that we have each summer, um, and the new guys coming up in the business.
And as you can tell, I'm not the most seasoned or experienced member of the team, um, but I do benefit greatly from their efforts to continue to develop me and to empower me to become a more well-rounded construction professional.
I'm not sure what he meant by that. But, I was always taught as a leader that we should always be training somebody to replace us, and I take great pride in doing that, because it's, it's awesome to watch people coming up through, through the ranks. Coordination and management, uh, we are on top of everything with communication with the architect on the, and the owner on any questions that may come up throughout the project. Uh, we like to communicate by marking drawings up extensively to try and make the question as simple as we can, so whenever we have a question, we want to do markup showing, here's where the problem is, here's what the conflict is, here's the question we have, and in a lot of cases, in a lot of cases, through our experience, we'll say, how about this, can we do this, and we have everything they need there, so they don't have to lay it to the side and say, I need to look something up later. Um, in addition to that, we would plan to take what we have, questions we've raised through these two projects, and we have already been incorporating a lot of them in the as-built drawings, we would present those to the di, design team, and where those same changes would be a part of this project, we would want those to become part of the final construction documents, and we would eliminate several questions throughout the project.
I was going to say, Roger, you, Brandon, JJ, you guys know these plans and specs forwards and backwards, I mean, I think this, this process is probably going to be about a streamline of any companies you could possibly ask for.
You would think that would be the case, yes, sir, we certainly should. Uh, submittals and RFIs, uh, submittals, we'll be on that from the very beginning, we want to communicate to you, the owner, through the architect, everything that we're going to need that is time-sensitive, and we would want to get those things out to you, we will be the one that will be pushing you a little bit to say, we got to have this, uh, some of those items you may be thinking are way down the road, but we're looking at the broad view, we have a broader vision, and we know what we got to have, so that we can get these things moving, not to mention the delays that may come through what we've been experiencing with COVID. Uh, communication transparency, I mean, we have mandatory weekly production meeting with all the subcontractors, we would ask that, uh, your owner's maintenance reps be there, as well as, uh, any people that you have on staff that you think might be, uh, interested in gaining insight through these meetings, this keeps you totally informed of what's going on the job, total transparency on a week-in, week-out basis, and it also gets you totally involved in, uh, items of interest such as, this is where water valve shut-offs are going, this is where your thermostats are going to be, or, hey, we want to keep you after a meeting, walk you through the building, and just get it, get your feel and make sure this is going to work for you, because every maintenance, every maintenance, uh, company, every issue is different, and so, we want this job to be tailored to work for you, because you'll be the ones there when we are gone. Uh, monthly, we have owner-architect meetings where we get together with, uh, the architect, you, the owner, we go through the project schedule, outstanding RFIs, submittals, review the monthly invoice, any issues that may be hanging, are we on schedule, are we off schedule, uh, things we need your feedback input on, and just make sure that we're all on the same page. Uh, we have meeting minutes distributed within twenty-four hours of every meeting, and also include, uh, Microsoft Teams and/or Zoom, so that if anybody can't be there, they can still participate if they are available. Schedule is one thing that we excel at, mainly because experience through some of us that are extremely seasoned, I mean, we have, uh, built this project twice, uh, between the two schools, we made adjustments, these schools were running about ninety days apart on the ones we're on, and I always like to brainstorm and get with the team and say, what can we do differently, get the subcontractors involved, there were several areas throughout these two schools that we changed our whole approach, went a different direction, and we picked up as much as forty working days on some specific task, and was able to let some things happen a whole lot sooner, so we have already been brainstorming what we would do differently here, we would do a lot of things the same, but we would continue to be open-minded and make this one even more streamlined and make it smoke. Cost control, we'll stay on top of all your allowances with, uh, contingency allowance and contingency logs, keep you updated on any change requests as they happen, we do this via email, web-based software, communicate with the architect- We do this via email, web-based software, communicate with the architect via text message, pictures, whatever we need to do to keep the project moving. We have monthly cost-complete meetings with our office management team, and that goes through every budget line item so that at the end of the month, we can keep you up-to-date with real-time cost tracking. Post-construction actually begins for us during the construction process. We're all, as soon as we're doing submittals, we're starting closeout documentation. Owner training begins to take place as we begin to finish up systems. We will want you, the county, whoever needs to be involved in all of that training, hands-on. This is what this looks like. This is how this operates. This is how you start it up. And here's the book that'll go with it, and we will present all that to you at the completion of the project. Warranty, we're a local company, and we always keep the project team involved. And warranty matters because they know these subs, they know the building better than anybody, and it's very likely that you would see JJ following up on this.
Yes, there was more to go. I'd be there.
Building schools, key takeaways. I love construction. We love to build. We've built big buildings. We've built a bunch of schools. I've done educational a good part of my career, both on college campuses, elementaries, and other places. And we would like to add this one to our portfolio and ready to hit the ground. Just say yes.
We've been building this community since the 60s. We know that we can better Wayne County, not only through events such as the Habitat for Community Women Build, Soup Kitchen United Way, but we also see this as an opportunity to partner with the school system to create and build an environment that your team can move into, move your students into, and achieve new levels of success, accomplish your goals, and just keep doing the work you're doing for our community.
Building relationships. We want to be your partner. We want to be your partner. This is the image of a recent ribbon-cutting ceremony. And I would like for you to imagine that you're at the ribbon-cutting ceremony for this school. The crowds have gathered, the ribbon stretched out, and you're looking at each other and you're thinking to yourselves, we made the right decision selecting Daniels and Daniels to build this school for us. They guided us every step of the way. They were easy to work with. They communicated with us. We were proactive all the time, and they made our life easy. So, we as a board can focus on other things besides a construction project. We can focus on the things that we need to as a governing board for the school system. We want to be your partner. We want a relationship with you. We don't want to build this building, but not just build this building. We want to have a lifelong relationship with you. Now, we could probably talk all day about this project because we've got all this knowledge in here, and we'd get really excited about it. But I think we probably, our time's up, and we've probably gone over it. So, we want to turn it over to you for some questions.
Thank you, team, for the presentation. We greatly appreciate that and the information that you've shared. So, these can be answered, of course, by the team, if you want to answer these questions. The first one is pretty evident, probably looking at Roger and JJ, is discuss the experience of the superintendent and the project manager of this particular project.
Roger, take it away, sir.
As far as this project goes, I mean, I've worked currently on the two projects that are going on hand-in-hand with the architect, with the owner, helped with the buyout, helped with subcontractor selection. My experience is beyond 30-some years, and I'm being kind at that to not date myself. But, I have done work on university campuses as far as student centers, dorms, athletics, fields. I've done corporate office buildings. If you've ever been to Gatlinburg or Pigeon Forge, you would probably know a lot of the work that I've done down there on multi-story hotels. I've done heavy industrial work, extensive CM@Risk from the ground up. I'm a carpenter by trade and worked in the field as a carpenter, as well as a superintendent, which I think, in my particular case, it actually has helped me tremendously in project management because there's not a whole lot of subs that can push me around because I've been there, done that, and I know how it's put together. So, I've got a pretty long resume and would be glad to add this one to it.
JJ?
I've been in the business for over 20 years. I've been with Daniels and Daniels for 16. I've done some school projects. I've worked on universities before. I've worked with Durham Public School System. Really love to do this building for you.
JJ, JJ's been with us a long time. He's done a lot of federal work. He's done federal design-build work. He's done work for municipalities. He's just progressively done larger and larger and more complex projects throughout his career. He's been just a real rock star for our company.
So, this question might give you an opportunity to kind of elaborate on the two schools you're doing now, but what experience do you have in the public school?
Well, I'll take this one from maybe a broad stroke. We've been doing public schools, public education for several decades now, probably going back to the 80s. I think we did some pretty major renovations in this building right here, maybe about 25 years ago or so. We've done some work in some of the schools in the county, Durham, Onslow County, up in Johnston County. We've been building schools for a very, very long time. A lot of K through 12 and some higher education as well. And I know we've talked a lot today, well, not as much as I'd like to talk about. Wish y'all gave us about three hours. We could have told y'all constantly about these schools. Of course, the two Onslow schools that we've been spending a lot of time talking about today. Do you want to add anything to that?
I've done a half a dozen or more elementary schools of similar size here around East Tennessee and Virginia, as well as, like I said, a lot of work on university campus plus these schools here. So, fully understand working with the county.
Thank you. Okay, so our next question is, can you describe your process for conceptually estimating during the beginning stages of trying to provide that guaranteed maximum price?
Well, I think for this project, our process here is very unique in that we have about as recent of numbers as you can possibly have for projects of this, exactly like this, that we're actually did. So, I think we would start with that as a really, really good template. That's historical data that we have that I don't think anybody else presenting here today has anything that recent. So, we would start with that for sure. We also build on historical data from other projects. We're always bidding work. We do, we like to do negotiated and construction manager-type projects, but we also like to do a lot of hard-bid work. So, we've got a really good finger on the pulse for what it takes and what the going numbers are out there right now. So, we would build on with that. And I think I was talking earlier in the presentation, we are constantly talking to, because it's whether we eat or don't eat, really. I mean, it's, we are constantly a finger on the pulse with what goes on with subcontractors, the material prices, how labor's looking, if somebody needs a job or doesn't need a job, what's the coverage going to be like. And we'll take every bit of that into account along with just our overall knowledge of this project as our baseline for this school.
I would just add that as a project manager, it's always good. I really like being involved in the early process of reviewing the scopes from all subcontractors to try to get away from those what are called bustin' scope budgets, where it's like, oops, we thought this guy had that and that guy didn't have that. And the extra advantage that we have to these is we have realized that, you know, as tight as we are on scopes, that we know a lot of areas now that we will be even tighter on, which will make this budget even more precise as we get to that end number.
Thank you. So, kind of following up on that question. So, you had a timeline, and your presentation is one of your slides. Thinking about that and what we just talked about, how would you describe how and when Wayne County Public Schools or the architect would know what that cost of construction is with this particular project?
Well, I don't mean to simplify this, but every step of the way. We would be able to, if you selected us to do this project, we could sit down with you next week and start talking about where we were, and start talking about what adjustments we're looking at. But, I mean, I think in just a short period of time, especially while we're getting through the design of the civil, we could really be taking the current market data for what material costs are doing and those types of things and extrapolate a good budget from that. And by the time we get the civil design done, we ought to have a pretty good handle on what our budget needs to be so that when we go to bid it out, we're not looking at any surprises. And I think we could use that data to help determine exactly what it is you want to do. There's different options of things. I know that Pinnacle's got some different ways, some different things, options that you can take. We can use that data that we have to help you make those decisions that you'll need to make so we don't get too ready to start this thing and have an issue.
Thank you. So, the next question kind of goes with one of the parts of your presentation, talking about your subcontractors. So, for the board, how do you choose the subcontractors who are going to bid on the project?
Well, so, I don't want to rehash too much, but we will have a very strong pre-qualification process. It's so important that we have good quality subs, that everybody's afforded the opportunity to submit a pre-qualification, that we get this information out to just as many people as we can. I think the more qualified subs that we can get bidding on this project, the better numbers we're going to get, the more competition that'll be increased. But, we need to make sure that we've got strong, qualified subcontractors. And, you know, I spoke a little earlier about making sure, you know, we're checking the boxes on the obvious things. But, we need to make sure that we've got a subcontractor that's, you know, not, maybe not just stretched out and doing a whole bunch of projects right now and really can't get the hours when we need them to. I mean, time's money for all of us. You guys are the ones that put kids in these schools just as soon as we get them done. And we got deadlines to meet too. So, we need to make sure that they've got the manpower and those resources to staff those projects accordingly and help us get this thing and bring it across the finish line.
What I would add to that is we would work hand-in-hand with these subcontractors. We need quantities. We know from schedule that we know you need 40 masons or you need 30 electricians. And this building is huge. And anybody that thinks that they'll work on one part of this building and then go to the next one, it's not going to happen. So, we're not one of these contractors that puts ourselves in a position to where, okay, I've only got this many people, a subcontractor tells us, so where do you want me to work, A or B? Our answer is both. And so, that's part of the pre-qualification because it's a huge building, it's a huge site, and you need people working on every part of the site, and that takes a lot of people, qualified people.
Thank you. So, our next question for the team is, how do you achieve quality in your construction?
All right, guys. Y'all take this away. Let me tee it off for you. We do have a general superintendent who's responsible for, and he's a general superintendent for all of our projects, but he is responsible for running our quality control program. He ensures that our superintendents, our project engineers, everybody in the field is adhering to that. Our quality control programs, we do a lot of federal work, is based upon the Army Course Program for Quality Control, Quality Assurance. We've developed that from the three phases, preparatory, initial, and follow-up inspections. We have to do that on a lot of our federal jobs. So, it made a lot of sense for us to just apply that to everything we do, make it across the board, and it just streamlines the whole process. And it's been implemented since right after World War II. So, it's a pretty effective, proven method of quality control. So, I'm going to turn it over to you guys to kind of expand on that, what you do in the field.
So, I'll make it real simple, and this is true, and these guys can elaborate. I mean, we've been around it for a while. We've got an eye for quality. We watch it going in. We watch it, and if it gets us wrong, it's tore out, and you do it again. It doesn't matter if it's block concrete, steel framing, metal rug. If it ain't right, it's coming out.
I'd like to reinforce the details with the guys out in the field, just make sure they understand what they're looking at and how it needs to go together.
And I really want to key off what Jeremiah said. We really do hone in on those pre-install meetings, which is an opportunity for us to be able to go through the submittals, the specifications, and the plan set with each subcontractor one final time before they start mobilizing onto the project, and just make sure that everybody's on the same page. A lot of times, quality issues come from a lack of communication, and I don't feel that that's an issue here with Daniels and Daniels.
And the pre-install is, it's clearly delineated what is expected, not only from the architect's specs, but from what we expect.
So, before a single member of that crew grabs a tool and starts working, they sit down with these guys. They go through what they've submitted. We make sure that it's right. They go through the plans. They go through the specs. We go through a safety orientation. They let them know what they expect on the job site before they ever go out there and do a single thing. And that is the key to starting off any single scope. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So, this next one you've touched on a couple times, just in your presentation and then with your slides. So, can you give us a little more detail on how you ensure safety right at the job site?
Go ahead, guys.
Well, just off the bat, each week we have a toolbox talk. And as many of you know, we have a large and growing Hispanic and Spanish-speaking community in the construction industry. And in an effort to ensure that everyone is understanding of the standards that are in place with OSHA, I'm bilingual, and I hold my meetings in English and in Spanish, using the OSHA 1926 manual. Also, everybody on the project management team is empowered to issue a write-up or to stop work in the case of someone performing work in an unsafe manner. And we have stopped work in instances, and we use those opportunities as moments to teach people of the importance of safe habits, safe practices, and how doing a job safely empowers and enables them to work and have a longer career.
And I would just say, from a corporate level, we think having a separate quality and safety director is a really important thing. These guys are looking for safety and quality, but they're production-minded. They're out there getting it done. So, having that separate set of eyes every single week on the safety side and the quality side gives us at home a little bit more insight into what's going on, gives us progress from a different perspective. We do have a safety committee. Brandon's on that as well. And in that, we do focus on what are things that you guys are seeing in the site every single day? How can we do better? How can we, like Brandon said, educate? As he says frequently, safety, showing that you care about people's safety is just another way of showing that you care about them. And that kind of goes with our mentorship philosophy on the safety side as well.
In addition to that, you know, we've said several times, we have weekly safety meetings, but of a project this size, you should just envision that, I mean, even the project managers, whoever's on site, this whole project stops. Like, on this particular project, the entire project shuts down at nine o'clock every Wednesday morning, and at times, you will have 150 workers come into one location where there is a single safety topic talked about. In addition to that, every single employee that comes on that job from every subcontractor goes through a 20-minute video orientation, gets a safety sticker before they ever set foot on the job. And all full PPE is mandatory on the entire project. There's no flip-flops. There's no tennis shoes. There's no shorts. And that goes for delivery drivers as well. And this is before you ever hit the ground running. And so, if you've got 20 people working and you bring five more, they go through the orientation again.
We've also got this project slated to be our fifth Sharp project. So, we've been a part of the Sharp project for a while now through OSHA. And what that is, is bringing our subcontractors along. Rather than have OSHA pop in on us, we actually invite them on the site. Every two months, they come down, have a subcontractor show their safety program, go through their policies and procedures. So, we're not only elevated, but our subcontractors are as well. The assistant superintendent for this project will be mainly responsible for that safety program.
Now, you did hear that right. We actually invite OSHA to come on our job sites. But, it's a proactive way, and it gives us a really good relationship with them, and let's just be proactive. One last thing on safety, and we can move on. All of our field managers have OSHA 510 training. And that may be unfamiliar to some of you. The standard is an OSHA 30. You've been through 30 hours of training. You've got a good understanding of OSHA. That's not good enough for us. We have OSHA 510, which is next, next, next level. And we have everybody, I think we've just completed our training for every manager in our company, a field manager in our company. So, these guys have the training.
Thank you. So, our next question is, how do you facilitate change requests by the owner? And can you discuss that change order process?
Well, there's never any changes, right? So, change requests, we hit them head-on because we believe that you have to communicate any cost changes. And we do that, pick up the phone call, the architect, shoot an email, document the costs, do detailed cost breakdown. If there's any way to work around it, what can we do differently is always our first question. Is there a way to get around it? Is it a bust here? Is it a bust there? Or, first of all, can we eliminate it? And if you can't eliminate it, then what can we do? And if you can't eliminate it, then what can we do this instead of that? And so, we just stay on top of those just by communicating paperwork and having clear, concise approval before we proceed with any change.
And that example that you gave with the geofabric and having, you know, saved pretty much half of the undercut, these are things, we're always trying to build a better mousetrap, trying to come up with ways. We don't like change orders. We wish the job would stay just like it is from beginning to end. With these projects, there were carefully created allowances that were built into the project that account for unforeseen conditions. Maybe there's some decisions that haven't quite been made yet. But by you all, when we get the project started, and we need to have an allowance or contingency in there to take care of it later on down the line, when you do it right, and I think we've figured out how to do it right, and with Pinnacle, you don't, you take care of all those things. So, you've got that pocket of money if you need it. And at the end of the job, if you don't use it, it goes back to you. Like I said earlier, we didn't use all of our allowance on Southern Wayne, and you guys got a little bit of money back. So, that's what we like to try to do. Let's think about this thing at the beginning of the job, try to account for all that. There's gonna be a few unknowns, but let's set aside some money for that, so we don't have to go back to the well later on. Because nobody wants to go back to the well.
All right, guys. I got about two more left in about five minutes. So, these two I'm gonna put together like I did last time. So, your punch list process, your closeout, and warranty process. Can you discuss those briefly?
Punch list, these two particular jobs right now, the first one that we're on stump, I'm personally doing the punch list myself and looking at it my own self. I'm creating it and documenting it on our web-based software. Superintendent and assistant superintendent are working on it as well in real time. When we can take care of things immediately, we will. We wanna get that punch list to ninety, ninety-five percent before we ever ask the architect or owner to come in and do their list. We also go ahead and get the owner involved on certain things that affect them. Like, we want you to go ahead and check any tile. If we've waxed it, so we can get all that stuff out of the way for any little dimples here or there, or wherever we got to do stuff like that, we will. And then, these guys will be doing the same thing. And the closeout, like we touched on, I mean, we're gonna do all the training. JJ will be hands-on with that in the field, anything like that going on. Closeout documents, we're not one to drag those out. We wanna get it over with, get those in your hands. So, as we do the submittals, and we know this middle is final, and these things start going into place, we already start accumulating those things. We don't wait until the end of the project to start accumulating them.
You guys don't wanna get owing in manuals six months after the job's over. You wanna be not thinking about Daniels and Daniels anymore and just got kids in the school.
And then, warranty-wise, then?
Yeah. Warranty-wise, we're local. You guys call us, we're on it. That's important to us. I want you to know that you've got a contractor that's gonna support your building when it's done. And when you have something to question, or something's not quite working right, there's some bugs to work out, you call us. We're there. We're there that day.
You touched on this one a lot, but I want you to have an opportunity for it again. Why do you want this project?
I'll let everybody else chime in, but I'll say this. There's a couple of different things. My aunt taught at Fremont. She was an elementary teacher for thirty-two years. So, I know the school is needed from knowing her my whole life. So, I know you guys need a school there. It would mean a whole lot to us to be a part of bettering the education of Wayne County. We're right here, local. We wanna do you a really good job. The ownership of the company is in this room. You've got our support from that. As I said earlier, I want to have a relationship. We want to have a relationship with you. And we want to make Wayne County, Wayne County Public Schools, the best it can possibly be. Katie, I mean, that just means, it's more than just a job. It's more than just a job.
Yeah, we love working in Wayne County. When I interview people and they ask about, you know, will I have to travel out of town? I'm like, no. You know, for, since sixty-two, we've been sending our people home every night, back to their families. So, if we could do all of our work in Wayne County, I think we would, but we're just not there yet. But yeah, being able to, like I said, create an environment where you guys can come in. Our, some of our extended D and D family is gonna be students in this school. So, we want it to be the absolute best building possible. We know that we're the team to have that happen.
And I think, really, it's a challenge to us too. We finish these, finishing these two schools non-slow, and these guys are chomping at the bit to see if they can do it faster, if they can do it better, if they can do it even smoother than they did before.
Yeah.
I mean, this, yeah. Well, it's easy. Sorry, sorry.
I was just gonna say that we've done two of these, and I love construction, love strategizing, and we just are kinda anxious to see how we can smoke this one even faster.
Well, thank you for the Daniels, Daniels team coming and presenting. We appreciate your presentation. This concludes the question and answer. So, this is our opportunity for any board members that would like to ask any specific questions. You can.
Does anyone have anything they'd like to ask Mr. Latham?
People are talking a lot about civil design and what goes into that. We know where our property is for this building. I'm just curious if part of your moving it along, if you've actually gone out and taken a cursory look. Where are we to build this?
Yes, yes, we have. It's a beautiful field. It's hard to tell just from walking around exactly what you've got there. But we are familiar with the site. We're typically very familiar with what local conditions are around here having built for a long time. Roger, you wanna add anything?
I have not been to the site. I've been otherwise entertained, but I'm anxious to get there.
We're certainly used to building new facilities on what was once farmland. So, we've got a lot of experience with that.
Any other question?
My only question was, what I asked the other crew, you know, when was the last time you built this building? Obviously, you've answered that a hundred times. It's happening now, so.
Today.
To me, that's an important fact. You guys see it right now, the way, you know, materials are, you know, on uprise and then just the availability of certain things and whatnot. It's good that you guys have your finger on that pulse right now, because that also can make or break you. And hopefully, we're over this thing, and things will get back to normal, but who knows what the new normal will be.
We've followed that a lot too, you know, knowing the submittal process and been able to streamline that. Anything we can do to go ahead and procure materials and equipment early, even if we need to store it on-site instead of waiting for price increases or whatever might happen, or something getting bogged down coming across the border because of some COVID thing. I mean, we've seen it all. Anything we can get, go ahead and procure it, lock in that price, get it on-site, get it taken care of, so it's there when we need it. We've been brainstorming that for months.
Mr. Schwartz, do you have anything?
Yeah, the two schools in Onslow County currently, are there students in them yet? Or are they, where exactly are they right now in the process?
The Stump Sound Elementary at Holly Ridge is, we're scheduled to turn out over the first of June. And the other one, the contract completion time at Catherine Lake, is the end of December.
Okay. Those are the scheduled dates?
Yes, sir.
You're gonna make those dates?
That's the contract dates.
You're gonna make them?
We will make it at Stump Sound. We will exceed it at Catherine Lake, but that's off the record.
One last thing. What is our timeframe for this? Should you guys get the bid in, what are we looking at, December twenty twenty-two?
Depending on how the site can start, that's a key factor. I think the building time will probably be fourteen, fifteen months, hopefully less. I'm being conservative. The site work is, it all depends on when we can start that, but.
Depending on the season.
Depending on the season, and because that will project where we're gonna be able to go in the dry. We have a really good strategy that gets this thing under roof pretty quickly. And we will tweak that a little more, but site work is the key. And that's why we would be extremely anxious to be involved on that front end.
So, I have.
All right. I don't think we have anything else for you, Dr. Harv.
Sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'll just, one last thing, is with all humility and sincerity, we would like to do this job for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I do have these handouts. If you don't mind, I'll mask up real quick. Kara Greening is a former secondary school teacher. Kara is responsible for business development for TA Loving Company. Plays a crucial role in making sure we're pursuing the right mix of work, and more importantly, making sure we're satisfying the clients that we've got projects with now. Scott Nguyen has led pre-construction from our Goldsboro office for fifteen of his thirty years of experience. Scott lives about ten minutes from our office. He lives about five minutes from the job site. We've got Josh Price. Josh is also a product of Wayne County Schools. Josh has been, excuse me, Josh has spent about fifteen years of his experience with pre-construction and project management, all on projects in Wayne County. Mark Beach, our project manager, who's not with us today. Mark's actually on vacation with his wife. He had that planned back in the fall, so I felt bad about telling him to cancel his vacation, but we do have him. We do have access to him, and I do want y'all to meet him. And lastly, but not least, we've got David Lewis. David's our superintendent. He's a lifelong Wayne County resident. Lives on his family farm about ten minutes from the job site. So, we've got folks immediately available in close proximity to the job and to our office, and I think that's important. It's not every day we get to show off Wayne County School success stories. So, two of our team members are, that's their middle school pictures, I guess. We got Josh Price on the left and David Lewis with an awesome haircut on the right. He said he'd have a hard time pulling that off today, so he just shaves it. So, I'm very proud of this team, looking forward to sharing more with you about how we'd approach a project. A little bit about us. A lot of you know us. We've been headquartered in Goldsboro since nineteen twenty-five. We started as a bridge builder. Believe it or not, one of our first projects was a small dirt road bridge between Pikeville and Fremont. And ninety-six years later, we still build bridges, in addition to world-class K-12 schools. We are the local partner of choice, we believe. You've not interviewed another team today with more knowledge of Wayne County construction or one with more dedication to seeing Wayne County schools achieve the goals they've set for this project and others. A few key differentiators, nine K-12 schools completed through alternative delivery, whether that be CEM at Risk or Design Build at a value of over two-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars. Thirty-plus, probably more like forty-plus CEM at Risk projects for public and private owners in North Carolina. Each delivered on time and all exceeding minority participation goals. So, what I can tell you with that is, select this team, and rest assured, we've got your back. I believe we're the first to deliver schools for Wayne County Public Schools through CEM at Risk. And I know that we are the first and only contractor to do the same for Wayne County and Wayne County, Wayne UNC Healthcare, excuse me. And as I mentioned earlier, we've been in town for ninety-six years, so we have no plans of leaving anytime soon. And lastly, and probably most importantly, or most proud of the fact, out of two-hundred-and-seventy-five employees that we have at TA Loving Company, about a hundred of them live in Wayne County, and about fifteen or twenty of those within close proximity of the Fremont school. So, we're gonna move forward with our presentation, but I do want to thank you again and tell you that this team is here today to guarantee you a successful project, whatever measure you choose to grade it by, and that's a promise to you today. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Scott, and he's gonna get into pre-construction. Thank you.
Thanks, David. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about pre-construction, and I'm gonna turn it over to our construction guys to go over what they do once we break ground. The focus and the goal of pre-construction is gonna be to set the project up for success. As pre-construction manager, I'm gonna work closely with Mark Beach, all the way up into groundbreaking, basically. This being a prototype, our focus is gonna be really on K-school lessons learned and constructibility reviews of whatever documents were given initially. As a taxpayer of Wayne County and living just down the road from this project, the budget really is where I'll spend a lot of my time in pre-construction, probably the majority of it. We wanna be a good steward of Wayne County's money, and we wanna make sure that it's used as efficiently as possible. One way that we're gonna do that is, we're gonna make sure that when we put this project out to bid for subcontractors, we have detailed scopes of work for subcontractors. We wanna make sure that we don't have scope gaps between trades. We also wanna make sure that we're not doubling up on items between trades that would be inefficient use of all of our money. Another really key aspect of pre-construction is minority business participation, and which TA Loving is very serious about. We continually exceed our goals on minority participation on projects. The way that we do that is, we engage subcontractors early in the process to get them involved and get them excited about the project. We not only engage the prime contractors, but we also reach out to second, third-tier subcontractors and even minority material suppliers to make sure that they know the project is coming up for bid. We offer expedited and quick pay agreements to emerging and small businesses. That allows them to meet their labor payroll and material bills on time. And then, early on in the project, we're going to do a subcontractor outreach meeting. And that's, the primary goal of that is gonna be to convey details to the subcontractors and suppliers, to review scopes of work, to make sure that they make sense to the subcontractors and are comfortable with how we break down those packages. And we will review the bidding procedures and the requirements for submitting sealed bids that are required under this process. And then, the last thing we do is, we reduce bonding requirements for emerging and small businesses to break down the goals, to make sure they can come to the table and get a bid to us. The results of all these efforts are almost always that we're exceeding the goals on our minority participation. There's, this graph is just a few examples. Two of those examples are right here in Wayne County. One is Spring Creek and Granton Elementary Schools grouped together. We exceeded our goal and had over twenty percent participation from minor, of minority contractors on that project. And then, the most recent project we did in Wayne County for the city was the Goldsboro Streetscapes Phase Three, in which we had just under two-thirds of minority participation on the project. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our construction team, and they're gonna talk about that process. Thanks.
So, good afternoon, everyone. I need to confess something before I start. I have someone on the inside. I've got a little spy running around at Meadow Lane. He's in the first grade. And I asked him last night after dinner, I said, Henry, what's your favorite thing about school? And he said, lunch. I said, okay, let's rethink that. What's your favorite thing about the building? I need some information. And he said, well, I love the gym, Daddy. So, as long as we have a gym and a lunchroom in this thing, we're already off to a good start. So, you're gonna hear collaborative and collaboration a lot from us today. The way we look at this whole process is that it's a team effort between contractor, the designer, the owner. And we're coming together early and often and working things out as we progress along. We're bringing our full team in, not just, you know, office and pre-con staff, but we're getting David Lewis involved, and he's looking at plans. We're trying to see what works in his experience, what's worked in the past, what can we do to do better. We're picking the designer's brain and saying, hey, you guys have built this school a couple times, and we realize that it's, that the design has progressed, so what can we learn from that process and what can we do better? And that filters all the way down to value analysis. Once we get into things, hey, there may be a better or more efficient way to do this than what we first thought. So, what can we do to give the owner the same great end result, but maybe get to it by a little bit different method? That filters down to the same kind of process with working the schedule, building the bid manual. It's, the point of this is that it's a group effort. It's a collaborative effort on our part with you guys to make sure that when we get ready to go from pre-construction to construction, that we've all been involved. David's been involved. We've got subcontractors coming in and giving us feedback. So, when we go to build it, it's seamless.
Like you said, team effort, constructive reviews are very important to project success. By using our project team and others within the company with K-12 experience, we can infuse a bunch of construction knowledge and design development. That's a big help for everybody. With doing that, we bring these subcontractors who've been leveraging through these outreach meetings and whatnot to build proper scopes. And that way, we coordinate the drawings properly, build a good scope. They know what they're getting, and creates a lot less impact when projects get wrapped up. So, project execution is where the rubber meets the road. With Mark and David being involved, all through design development, their interactions with subcontractors, we can quickly get our partners under contract with scopes of work they helped develop that allows us to hit the ground running. TA Loving's invested time and money to have a collaborative project management software that. that houses all the pertinent information of your project. It's a shared legal path that keeps their reports, drawings, meeting minutes, project photos, and much more. We use Procore for this. With this tool, we can build tailored QAQC plans that are built around your project for specific in-wall rough ends, detailed envelopes, complex mechanical systems, and much more. All site-specific safety items and plans are housed in this platform for transparent interaction with subcontractors, owners, designers, and consultative service. We're partnered with North Carolina OSHA, and when awarded this project, we would ask it to be a SHARP site with NC DOL. The SHARP program highlights implementation of exceptional workplace safety standards. We also support onsite education opportunities and STEM programs. When safely appropriate, we would encourage site visits from students, staff. Meanwhile, your project would be hosted twenty-four-seven by OX Blue webcam services for everybody's U.N. All these tools in our bookbag connect the field to the office seamlessly. These tools, along with our core values, deliver transparency to your project so we all stay on the same page from groundbreaking to the first day of school.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is David Lewis. I think we've got the same thing. That's, that's kind of ironic. I'd like to start off, get to tell you a little bit about myself. I work TA Loving. I'm a job site superintendent. I've been a superintendent for thirty years. I've been in the industry for thirty-seven, so I've built many a building in that amount of time. Want to hit on a quick safety moment. All TA Loving work is safe work or no work. That's our motto. If there's an unsafe condition, we stop everything and we make it safe. During my experience over thirty years, I've been very fortunate and nobody has ever got really hurt other than a Band-Aid on my projects because I keep an eye on what's going on. We do daily safety inspections and weekly safety audits. Also to let you know a little bit about myself and my history from Wayne County, my family's been here since before nineteen hundred, so I've been here generation after generation after generation. Me, all my family, and my friends have went to Eastern Wayne Junior High or Elementary, Junior High, and High School. Matter of fact, the buildings I went to, they've tore down and they're gone now. I come from a long line of farmers, come out of a little community called Softon, over by a wildlife pond, and that's kind of helped me have the work ethics and the morals that I have today, which is very strong related. I build every building as if it was my own. If I wouldn't have it at my house, I'm not going to have it on my job. If I'm not pleased with it, he's going to tear it out and he's going to do it again. I like to take pride in my work. It's, it says who I am and is part of my integrity. So I build every single building I've built for the last thirty years that same way. And I would build the same for y'all. Pre-planning is everything about a project. Some people say I don't even go to the bathroom without having a plan, but I do. I like to analyze and dissect and plan everything out. I know everything don't always go to plan, but if you plan it properly, it very well can. To give you, for instance, I built a Maxwell over there and Hurricane Matthew was coming at that point in time, and the weatherman said it won't go hit, but I knowed it was. So we spent two days digging ditches and retainment ponds and setting up pumps, and it rang, I think it came in on a Friday and a Saturday and pulled out on Sunday. We went back to work on Monday and never missed a minute of production because we were prepared and had our ducks in a row. It would be a personal honor for me to build this school project for the county of Wayne, which is the same school that helped me educate me and make me the man I am today standing before you. It would be my way of giving back to the community, so please give me and Talco a chance to build this project for you. Also, it would be an opportunity to make Wayne County a better place to learn and live. Thank you.
I'd like to first thank all the members of the board for the interest that you've shown in TA Loving by selecting us to come and make this presentation. And I really think, I've just got a few remarks, but the theme of what I was going to say, David, our David Lewis beat me to it. When he said that he would build it like it was his project, well, this is our school system. I mean, all of us, you are our school system. So that's the way that we will look at this, and I think that will help to ensure the success of this project. TA Loving, having been in Goldsboro for ninety-six years, we've got a lot of David Lewis's. We've got David Lewis's whose father went to our school, went to our school system. They've got children that go into our school system and children that are going to go to the school system. So we have a personal interest in building this school and building it successfully for you. I can personally assure you that the people that have stood up here before you today are experienced and educated, that they can build this school, and it will be a successful job. And as the chairman of the company and a owner of the company, I personally commit to you the resources that will be required to successfully complete the project. And again, I just want to thank y'all for the opportunity and we really look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure how we're doing on time, but I think we're ready for questions if you guys are ready to hit us with them.
Yes, sir.
So.
And this, and this can be answered by one or whoever it fits in their category.
Depends on how hard it is.
How hard it is. So you kind of already, Mr. Lewis on this side kind of already touched on some of his qualifications, because the first question really is discuss the experience of the superintendent and the project manager that would be working on this site.
Right. So Mark Beach is, who's not with us, and we, we thought about getting him on FaceTime or whatever, but I can tell you personally, Mark has overseen about two-hundred and, about two-hundred-and-three million dollars in secondary schools, whether that be in pre-construction and through construction. APM, two of the schools that were completed down in Ori County. Mark's been with us for, I'm going to say fifteen, sixteen years now, and he lives over in, in Craven County. But, so Mark's got, in total, I would guess, he's probably got forty years of experience. And like I said, fifteen of that's with us. David's been here with us for how long?
Seven.
Seven years. He's been, you know, in Wayne County his whole life, so I don't know if that answers enough for the two of them.
It does. So the next question, you, you kind of touched on it too in your presentation, because you noted that you are correct, TA Loving did do the first CMAR project for Wayne County Folk Schools with Spring Creek and Grantham. But can you also give us a little bit more about the experience of TA Loving with school projects?
Sure. I would tell you that some of our earliest school projects probably go back to the nineteen-fifties. We've done several private school projects. We've done most of our K-12, K-12 experiences in the last ten years, and all of that is either in Wake County, Wayne County, or Ori County, South Carolina. We do also do a lot of higher eds. We were at East Carolina and NC State and UNC pretty, pretty routinely. I mean, we haven't gone, we probably haven't gone a year without having a project on one of those campuses in quite a while, so that's a big piece of our business.
Okay. All right. So describe your process for conceptually estimating during the beginning stages in providing that guaranteed maximum price.
I told you when you got a hard question, I was going to get somebody else. Scott, you want to answer that?
Yeah, I can. Well, it, it really depends on what stage the project is in. So typically, we're going through some sort of three sta, or some form of three stages of budgeting. It'll start with a schematic design, it'll go to design development, and then it will finish at construction documents. And a lot of times in the construction document phase, it's going to be maybe multiple phases depending on regulatory reviews and things like that, and that, that process gets drawn out. But, so from the beginning, we talk, we start with SD. We're really doing three things. We've got a database of pricing that we use. We do market outreach where we're using subcontractors, and we're using historical data, data from past projects. Early on in the project, say SD, we're probably relying more on our in-house because there isn't enough really information to go out and get good market reach from subcontractors. We feel like we know actually more about what the project needs than they do because we're in the design meetings, et cetera. As the project progresses into DD and then CD, when we get to the final stages of design, we are most heavily relying on subcontractor input to make sure we're capturing what things are worth, worth in today's market. And that is, that's the challenge, is to make sure that we have a, have a, we're on top of what the labor trends are and material trends, and those change. We all know they're changing real fast right now. So, so at the end stage of design, that's, that's our goal. We're still looking back at historical data and database stuff, but we're also relying more on subcontractors than that.
It does. Thank you. So kind of in the same ballpark here, so since this is CMAR, describe how and when, right, you show the owner or the architect what the cost of construction's going to be?
You talking about like a guaranteed maximum?
Guaranteed maximum.
Typically, we are charged with giving a guaranteed maximum before documents or construction documents. We would, we would prefer we have construction documents in front of us before we come up with a price. Typically, that doesn't happen because a chain of events prevents, presents us from doing that. So we have to still make some assumptions in our guaranteed maximum price because we know there might be some reviews that are pending, if it's owner reviews, some sort of a jurisdiction that hasn't done their final approvals, file sign-offs, insurance, things like that. So it really varies, to be honest, from, from project to project. I can't say that every project is exactly the same because they're probably all a little bit different as far as when we give that. We like to give it as close to the point that construction documents are finished and they're ready for permitting as possible, but we do often make assumptions before that time and do a guaranteed maximum.
Thank you.
Most be the case. It's usually, it's usually the case.
So this next one, you, you touched on it in your presentation, talking about your subcontractors and engaging your subcontractors. And so the question really is around, how do you choose subcontractors to bid on the project?
We follow on public projects, we, we pretty much follow the state's guidelines for pre-qualification of subcontractors. We rely a lot on our past experience with, with those subs as well. We would bring a, a list of, of subs in every category, you know, as many as we can in each category, put them in front of the designer and architect, I mean, designer and owner, and say, this is, this is who's pre-qualified. We've got an opportunity to, to cull this crowd down a little bit. We would probably, you know, be honest about some comments about some people that do or don't belong on that list. It's a little tough to, to disqualify people, but there is a process for that. We've had to do that, I know at East Carolina, we've had to go through the process of disqualifying a contractor that wanted to bid on a public project.
It's somewhat.
Go ahead.
Somewhat rare. We don't.
It is rare, but it's kind of like, you know, we, we would treat your project like we treat our hospital projects. There's contractors out there that don't need to, don't need to work on hospitals, you know, unless, the only reason they need to be there is if they're sick. But, you know, it's kind of a, he can work all right in a forty-acre field, but he doesn't need to be working on an emergency room. Kind of the same thing with a school. There's some out there that do real well in certain types of work, but they really don't belong on a public K-12 project.
Right.
And we have that conversation openly with y'all just to make sure we've got a good, a good group of people working on it. It's ninety percent of the work. We want, we want the list of people to be as good as it can be.
But if I may.
Go ahead.
Say one more thing. With that being said, we also, we want to make sure that we make it accessible to, to people that are qualified that we don't know about. And we do use some, some programs, TradeTap, different programs to vet new subcontractors that we haven't worked with, where we can look into their background and see if it's something that they're capable of. Because again, we don't, we don't want to just exclude somebody because we don't know them. And we also, we have deadlines on pre-qualifications, but we do everything in our part to make sure that that pre-qualification gets in on time and we give everybody a fair chance.
I'll get forward.
Okay, so I know this one is important to you guys as is to the board. How do you achieve quality in your construction?
It starts in the very beginning, like Jason was talking about, in constructibility reviews of details. You know, assuming Fremont's going to look a lot like Meadow Lane, we've got a set of documents, we've still got that set of documents actually from Meadow Lane that we can go back and look at details on there. I'm sure some of them have evolved since that school was built, but getting that team involved, David Lewis and Jason and others, Mark Beach and Josh and these guys, and just pouring over those drawings and specifications to make sure we understand it before we actually buy it and try to put it together. Mockups are important. I'll give you an example of what we did with mockups at the hospital. We mocked up an entire operating room out of cardboard. Nurses and doctors walked through that, that mocked up ER and make sure that countertops were where they wanted them, lights were where they wanted them, you know, everything in the room was, was mocked up. So we believe in full-scale, full-size mockups when possible. Sometimes they're cost prohibitive, depending on how much detail they've got in them, but Jason mentioned Procore, the, the program that we use to manage our projects through. It's got a QR code system in it so that we can basically walk in a room, scan a QR code, and it brings up the details for the room. So a sub can walk in any room in the building with his iPad or iPhone, smartphone, scan that QR code, and it will bring up the details for the, for that room, tell him where he's at, tell him what, what that rough end should look like, where it should be. And to David Lewis's point, if it's not right, we'll tear it out. And we've, we've had that experience with you already.
This was another one that you, you touched on as well in your presentation, but we'd love for you to elaborate a little bit on is discuss how you ensure safety, right, with this, with the project.
I do daily walks. I'm a builder and I've got a certain amount of computer time I have to do in order to do what I do. So I'll work on my computer for hours, I'll walk the job site. I'll come back, I'll do a little more work on my computer, and I'll walk the job site. It is average five, five, seven, nine miles a day, and I'm walking and I'm looking. I'm looking for safety, I'm looking for quality. I'm not one of them guys that sit in the trailer all day and don't see what in the world's going on outside. I'm right there with the workers. I come up through the ranks, I know what to look for, and I know what's safe and what's not quality. So that's when you're able to catch a problem before it is a problem. You don't take but ten minutes for somebody to screw something up, take ten days to fix. But if you walk it and keep an eye on it, you can keep it right.
Just a little bit more, I mean, just company standard stuff, Exhibit A, if everybody on site is, you know, everybody gets implemented, gets trained, everybody gets orientation, those kinds of things, you guys and every, all, you know, all the subs, that's a big deal. Safety plans, let's find a risk, you know, eighteen months before we're actually going to do it, let's identify those things or what there's, you know, certain types of fall protection. You know, if we've got some deep activation, if we don't know what, we've got to open the drawings up and take a look at it. Greg Moretti, our safety risk manager, jumps right in, helps us develop those plans, bring the subs on board, develop those plans together, so nobody's hitting something out of the blue and catching them off guard and stealing them.
We've got three, you mentioned Greg Moretti. We've got three, I will say four people, full-time in safety and risk. We've got a full-time insurable risk person that handles all of our, our general liability, all of our health insurance, all those things. Greg Moretti heads up environmental health and safety, and he's got two guys that make weekly trips to job sites. They do audits. We get, everybody gets a copy of what those audits look like, and generally, everything's fixed before he leaves if there's a problem.
I have one comment on that, too. Safety really is a culture. If you don't have that, all these other things will not work. So we actually have two-hundred-and-seventy-some people that are involved with safety. They are accountable, they understand that we don't work if it's not safe. That's a, that's difficult sometimes, but you'll never make it happen if it's not really ingrained in people as a culture.
Thank you. Okay, so our next question is revolving around changes, right? So how do you facilitate changes requested by the owner? And can you discuss what that change process looks like for you?
So the first thing we try to do is, is prevent as many as we can, knowing that there's going to be something that may come up where you want, you know, a room rearranged or, you know, more usable space in this, this area or that. So there are some things we can avoid, but the, out of the gate, what we try to do is find all those things before we put a bid manual out for subs to, to bid. Fill in as many gaps as we can so we, you know, we don't have those issues of. Fill in as many gaps as we can so we, you know, we don't have those issues of getting the job bid and then finding out during scope review that they quoted nine things and should have quoted 10 and we're staring at the owner saying, we forgot to include item number 10 and we've got to tell you that some contingency's gotta be used or a change order's gotta be issued to get something paid for. I'd like Josh to talk about how that process works kind of during construction and once we get kind of underway and how he handles subcontractors popping up and saying, hey, I need to get paid for X. Josh, you want to touch on some change?
Sure. And Jason will probably, this will probably tie into some of him too. The platform we use, Procore, we can, when a change comes up, we identify it in the program. We have a distribution list that it goes out to. We can request proposals, we could mark that as a owner-initiated change, an internal cost that's on us or an outside cost, maybe it was added scope. So we initiate everything there. There's a workflow that's set up for it, so it flows out to the subs, flows back into us for review, and then it goes to whoever that next member of us would be to sign off and then it comes back for us to distribute it out. Jason is probably a little bit more knowledgeable on that than I am.
One step in between there, we'd probably try to do an informal, you know, review as well with you, just make sure let's, let's hit the target, I mean, let's not overshoot it. If there's a middle ground, and I'm not gonna say value engineer, but if there's a better value for that, let's go ahead and go through that vet process while the subs fully engage in the change. We can get a good handle on that at the beginning, that way everything's fair dollar for dollar and you see the transparency that whole time. And that's kind of the way that needs to kind of play out.
Well, and our vetting process on, you know, on the front end, if, kind of referencing back what David says, if a sub comes up and says, well, you've got this and we've got, you know, we've got this in the field or, you know, I didn't have this and we need to figure it out, well, we're gonna go back to Scott and preconstruction, we're gonna go to David and we're gonna say, well, let's all sit down and let's figure this out. What do we need to do to figure it out? Who owns it? You know, who's responsible for it, who owns it? And then we're gonna work through it fair. And like David said, we don't want to have too many of those on the job, but they can and they will come up, but we're gonna be as fair and as transparent about it as we can be.
We just want to make sure they're legitimate. If they make it to your table, we've vetted them, right, and it's a legitimate ask.
So this next one I'll kind of combine because they relate, so if you could discuss a little bit about your punch list process and about your closeout and warranty process, how that works or looks.
I'm gonna jump back to the QR code. It's taken a lot of legwork out of making sure we're managing those punch lists and so Jason's our, kind of our Procore expert.
By, just kind of by circumstance, but anyway, it's that true legal pad, you'll have a legal pad, you have a legal pad, I have one. Now it's all in one place, takes the question out of it. So the end of the job, we're quality controlling the whole time. You can literally walk in any classroom, any mechanic room, whatever, and see some custom inspection we built for, whether it's N-Wall rough end, there's no questions asked there. There's an inspection checkbox, local AHJ is a check mark, next step moves on. If there was a fail for some reason or whatever, we track, it's got picture documentation, you see that whole process, full transparency. That quality control program eliminates some of the, we'll call it work to complete because we've already done that first vetted process. You come to a place and it's actually done or you see what, okay, the guys have already done at this stage punch list, this is what we're turning over to you. That's a huge deal and you literally walk into a room, get the door jam, QR code, scan it up in your real time, right there, ready to go, makes the process move a lot faster. We've done this process on over a million square foot of higher ed, you know, lab facilities or whatever and it's, it is definitely proven, a huge time saver and definitely picked up the pace on how we can close out a project. You take that same information, specs, produce a middle log, all that produces types of middles, we can sort right down to a closeout. We can go ahead and have those talks early, early on, let's figure out what you want this closeout to look like, how you want it presented. At the end of the job, we can do a Kleenex port, we can give it any way you want, iPad, thumb drive, hard copies, and it's same place, you're active, you know, the principal.
Oh, that's with Procore?
All that through Procore.
Through the program. Alright, so this is the hardest one, so you might want to pass it off. Why do you want this project?
Why do we want this project? You know, we kind of touched, several of us touched on how important Wayne County is to us. We've, you know, most of us have had family here forever. A lot of them are Wayne County school products, a lot of, a lot of us, my wife's been an employee here. Our company's been here for 96 years. I will tell you that we're not overbooked like a lot of contractors are at the moment. The work fits well within the, you know, the backlog that we've got. We've got some nice projects coming up, you know, in 2020, late 2022, but that's a long ways away. We've got some big projects finishing right now. We're wrapping up the Act Center in Raleigh for Department of Agriculture, that was an 89, $90 million project that we did as a joint venture. And we've got, you know, six or seven people up there that need a place to go. David Lewis was the superintendent on that project. We've got him building a pool in Greenville right now, if that tells you how.
On the seventh floor of the apartment.
That is the complicated part of it, it's not the ground, but to get back to your question, it's important because we feel like this is, you know, something we're good at. We've got the right people available to do the job. Again, we're not, we're not overselling ourselves anywhere and overpromising what we can do and deliver, we're ready and have the capacity to do it and I think, I know we could be successful. I really do.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the team, bringing your team here to present and ask or answer the questions for the board. This is an opportunity now, if the board would like to entertain or ask any questions of TA Lovin, this is your opportunity.
Does anyone have anything? Mr. Latham?
Couple things. We touched on it a little bit, but as we all know, you can do your best to build something or make something and maybe not all the time it works out exactly as you thought. So with the warranty side of your company, how would you deal with something that after everybody was moved in and they all of a sudden said, ooh, this isn't right? What would you do?
We'd fix it.
Just fix it?
We always have.
Okay.
You know, getting back to the Wayne County roots thing, I mean, it's not just Wayne County, but every project we have, we treat, like David Lewis said, we treat it like it's something we're building for ourselves. You know, some of the issues we've had with the fields out at Spring Creek, I mean, we have gone back, that was a joint venture by the way, we're the minority partner in a joint venture for those two projects. But TA Lovin Company has gone back, you know, every time we've been asked and addressed those issues and fixed them. We've got a project for Mount Olive Pickle that we built seven years ago and six months ago, they found an issue with a drainage line, well, we're down there fixing it, you know. It's kind of like building churches, you never, you never get rid of them, you know, you're always going back and fixing things, so. I won't tell you that every problem that comes up post-occupancy, you know, legitimate warranty issues are legitimate warranty issues and we've gone back well after warranty periods were over because we knew something wasn't right. I mean, we didn't look an owner in the face and say, you found it too late, the warranty expired. So our, you know, our commitment to you is if you find it and something's wrong, we'll fix it.
Second, civil design aspect is important pre-getting anything going, obviously. Being a local company, I'm just curious if y'all have gone out and taken a cursory look at our piece of land that we plan on building?
So I've been in the general vicinity, I can't tell you that I've walked the site, but not knowing how much everybody knows about our company, we have a horizontal division that does water and wastewater and site development and heavy concrete infrastructure. And then we've got the building side which all these folks and myself are involved in, so I would tell you that as a business, we're probably as experienced or probably more experienced than anybody else you've talked to in terms of what Wayne County dirt looks like and what you can run into when you stick a, you know, shovel in the ground around here, so I don't doubt for a minute that we've got the expertise in the house to go out there and say, this is, this is gonna be an issue for you, if there is one. We've worked with all the geotechnical firms from Charlotte back to the Outer Banks, we've got good experience with all of them, so I don't remember who the geotech is for this project coming up, but I can assure you, we've worked with them before.
I follow up a little bit on your first question there. I've been with the company 50 years and our reputation is everything to me and that's what I talk about all the time in my role as chairman and president, that I was, and leader of the company. Success financially and not having a reputation means nothing. And I want our reputation to be good everywhere and especially good in our hometown. So, I mean, we're driven by that. Reputation and relationship is my number one thing.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything? I'd like to ask you one question. And Mr. Hunter, you can probably chime in for this, you've got a lot more years than I do, but with the current material situation and shortage in the country since about last March was a year ago, I mean, I'm a general contractor and I mean, it's the worst that I think I've ever seen it since I've been doing it. Has that affected the, because you start every project with a completion date. Has that affected any of your work schedules as far as your completion times? I mean, because maybe you don't experience if you're as large a company as TA Lovin is. But I mean, you know, a steel beam is a steel beam and if 10 people want it, they got two of them, then you, it's kind of, it's hard to pull it apart. I just wondered, has that affected your scheduling any at all and the ability to get material?
Probably more from a start a job, not finish a job yet. We might see some finish a job problems, but right now, we're experiencing more of, you probably don't want to start right now because we can't get bar joists for nine months and that's a fact. We just converted two small projects that we've got, one's a, is a central services building for Chatham County Schools. Bar joist and deck roof structure and we're trying to get it converted to a, I'm getting kind of deep in the weeds for a second, but to a junior beam and heavier deck design so we can get away from bar joists because we can get our hands on beams. We've got a fire department addition, it's a tiny little job and we've converted that to a different roof structure so we can get that material. I would tell you, don't build anything I would right now.
I mean, it's difficult to get windows on a schedule of any kind, it's just, I don't know.
Yeah, I was talking to David Perry a couple weeks ago and he said he had builders buying windows for houses they don't even have because they know they might need them somewhere down the road and they're just trying to get them on the way, so.
I just didn't know if that affected any of your projects that you got going on, because I mean, it could, I mean, I see how it could affect.
Yeah, the conversation is more about how long will it take to get, you know, in particular, some steel pieces and, you know, if something's got a lot of, you know, dimensional lumber in it, we're trying to get rid of that at the moment, but we're probably having more conversation about do we really want to start right now versus can we get finished? Because most of the jobs we have underway, material's been procured for quite a while, but I see that coming if things don't change.
We did dodge a bullet, we're building a student housing in Greenville for 800 beds and I think it's got 250 dishwashers and stuff and they were Samsung and they're on a ship somewhere and we gotta open up and shut down. So the owner agreed to get them from Kinston or New Bern, which makes a little sense.
But so that's, speaking of that, that's when you get a subcontractor and find out, maybe this is more readily available than I am or this avenue will be more readily available in 12 weeks or let's project that time, we all get a target, this is the material, let's go ahead and lock it in now. And that, that's how you get credibly subcontractors early. If we go ahead and let's pre-buy now, we're in procurement phase, this is not gonna change, we're not gonna need this for four, five, six months, whatever it may be, let's go ahead and get it on the way, we'll put it on the ground, we'll put it in the warehouse, let's get it, procure it, that way the job's ready for the next day. Thank you. Mr. Schwartz, do you have anything?
You go.
Well, thank you guys, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to go into closed session.
I'm moving to go into closed session and consider confidential personnel matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 1181, A and A6, and 115C, 319 through 321, and to consult with attorney for the Board of Education, order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 1183.
Have a motion and a second.
Add to that, to authorize agents to enter, to authorize agents of the board to enter into an employment contract. To negotiate the terms of an employment contract. To authorize agents of the board to. No, to authorize agents of the board to.
Down, how's that, that's good.
To negotiate an employment contract under 143, 318, 11185.
Alright, so. All in favor, raise your right hand. In the animals, Randy, you didn't vote.